And at 4:13, we will open the City Council Workshop on Valentine's Day. Who is up first? All right, discussion, consideration, and possible action for right-of-way management regulations. Drew, are you the lucky guy?
Yes. All right. So the right-of-way management ordinance, this is one that we took from, took to the Code Review Committee. They've looked at it multiple times. I'll get you more dates on that. I don't have any on my PowerPoint now that I think about it.
Multiple times.
Multiple times. We did, we discussed it quite a bit with the Code Review Committee. Several purposes behind the right-of-way management ordinance and some details that we'll go over briefly today, and then we'll have first reading later on this month. First, it is a Kerrville 2050 action item under Mobility 5.6 to develop and implement a new right-of-way ordinance and an access management policy for driveways, curb cuts, median openings, turn lanes, et cetera. I won't read these to you because these are the purpose statements that you have in the ordinance, but in short, the state of Texas leaves the city as the trustee of public right-of-way within the city. We certainly, at times, that construction can be disruptive to the public use of the streets, particularly when it comes to utility installations. The city has determined that, or obviously, we have substantial public funds have been invested into our roads and right-of-ways, and you are looking at adopting regulations to manage that, construction and other work for the benefit of the public. So without these rules, the utility companies fall under the Public Utility Commission rules for how they function and how they operate within the city. They still have to follow city specifications when they're doing right-of-way cuts and installations, but the management practices come from the state Public Utility Commission instead of from the city. However, if we adopt a local right-of-way ordinance, then we can dictate that management process and how we permit work to be done in the public right-of-way. And as you can see, we have quite a few people that use our right-of-way, including ourselves, for utilities. So as you can imagine, without a proper management system, this can get quite chaotic. And I know council's heard some complaints during citizen comments and grocery store comments, I'm sure. Grocery store aisle conversations.
It is frustrating.
Because many of-
I mean, to pave a new road and then have someone come cut it up.
Right. And many utility companies, like I said, we have very little purview over how they function in the right-of-way. So we wanted to get that before you, for consideration of that management. Essentially, it's going to create a permitting process similar to a building permit for a private development project. Anything in the right-of-way will have a permit. They've got to follow our construction methods. It'll be consistent with city specifications, the utility location and placement, traffic control, lane and road closures, and then pavement preservation. I was researching this for the Code Review Committee, found a report from the Federal Highway Administration. I'll spare you the major details because it's about 180 pages. But ultimately, I'll get, I'll send you the link. Ultimately, what they had found throughout the country is that utility cuts in the right-of-way led to early detriment, or deterioration of streets and roads, whether that's federal or local infrastructure. Very brief summary, they found multiple systems in place through different municipalities and different counties and state organizations to help mitigate that, whether through fees, requirements, permitting processes, and even moratoriums on utility cuts in the streets upwards, or averaging five to seven years for new paved roads. Kind of switching gears to our local side on the streets. As council is well aware, since 2016, we've spent over $11 million on street maintenance, pavement reconstruction, plus the eight and a half million on the bonds for reconstruction of roads. Significant investment into our community and into the right-of-way. That continued maintenance, obviously, is, or will continue. It's not just a one-and-done, as we've talked about. So I want to help protect that. And again, by and large, some of those utility cuts lead to that early degradation of the pavement.
Do we have any figures on that, on what this city has had to put forward in terms of the cost because of those cuts?
Because of those cuts? I do not.
Okay.
So some of that's more near-term. Obviously, over the last four to five years, the council's been very aggressive with street maintenance practices. But sometimes, they're, they're not immediate when you see a street cut, right? So it may be, you may have the immediacy of the inconvenience for certainly the motorist, who feels the bump every time they drive by it, but that road will never be the same. And so, but you may not see a financial impact for a number of years down the road till a pothole forms there or, you know, a more intensive reconstruction. So we may be on the precipice of some of those. Instead of a 20- to 30-year lifespan of the pavement, you're looking at 15 to 20. So you're paving, repaving them or reconstructing them much earlier. With the Code Review Committee, they discussed some policy updates which are within the ordinance to establish some moratorium period on newly paved roads of five years for Mill and Overlay, which is a reconstruction project of five years, and then for a Slurry Seal, backing that down to two years, because that would be an older street. But with that maintenance, want to protect that investment again. Any curb cut, or any, sorry, curb cuts, excuse me, any utility cuts within that moratorium would require a larger paving section. In the ordinance it's drafted is from intersection to intersection, curb to curb, so you're repaving the block. And then, of course, as we go through our normal budget process, we'll review the fees to see if there needs to be any updates on fees, since that did come out of that Federal Highway Administration report. Associated city actions, we'll continue to encourage the use of trenchless technology. Through our project planning, much of this we already do, but we'll continue to coordinate with the utility companies when we have a paving project to make sure that they're aware of it, if they need to get, get in the right-of-way before we repave the street. We give them that heads-up notice.
But they don't have any incentive now.
Right.
Other than being nice?
Correct. With this moratorium, they would want to stay ahead of that. If they have a project planned, they would be notified that we have a paving project. If they want to get in that street, now is the time, before we pave it. Otherwise, they'll be on the hook for repaving basically the entire road.
Or using trenchless technology.
Correct.
There, that is a more costly procedure, right, than just cutting a trench? But ultimately, the, the cost of cutting that trench and that repair damage that occurs is forwarded onto the taxpayer. And so by pushing them into either doing the correct thing in advance or going a trenchless technology, it helps motivate them to utilize those methods that don't destroy the street.
And then also, when we're repaving streets, we'll work with water and wastewater tap, or make sure that we have adequate water and wastewater taps for existing platted lots. So if we do have a vacant lot that comes in to be developed and we've just paved the road, we're not restricting them from building on that lot.
You'll recapture that when the development occurs?
Yes. Yeah, well, they'll pay their tap fee. Again, there's the street cut moratorium, is Section 115 in the ordinance. Code Review Committee also wanted to make sure that there was some method for relief to that, since we are asking for such a large pavement section. Again, intersection to intersection, curb to curb.
Yeah.
There may be instances where that's just not feasible.
That was the biggest discussion point of the last meeting, was the five-year moratorium and the full block repavement. And, you know, I think that was the compromise piece, that to say that there may be some extenuating circumstances that would benefit the ability to have a waiver or review process that council would look at. But am I, is that, I mean, is that your takeaway too? And so that's kind of, that was kind of the end of the discussion, was like, hey, yeah. I mean, because, you know, we had a developer and there was like, that's a lot. That's a big ask. Yeah, but you're going to know in advance. You're going to have an opportunity to get in before the work's done. You're going to have other technologies available. And if there's a huge block face and maybe there's an extenuating circumstance that really doesn't make sense for, for this, then council can consider that.
So it would come back to council for approval?
Those waivers would come to council. And Section 116 in the draft ordinance talks about that waiver. Again, where there's mitigating circumstances where they have to cut the street, gives council the criteria to look at that. And ultimately, that'll need to be designed to mitigate the concerns for that particular area. In my mind, drainage is going to be the biggest component, because once you've cut the asphalt, if you have a drainage intrusion at that point, it'll degrade the road quickly. If the curb, or if the utility cut is outside of any drainage area, then that would be one way to help mitigate that. So that'll be, need to be a discussion with staff and the developer, and then brought to council with hopefully an agreed-upon resolution at that point. So again, the waiver process was a big discussion at Code Review Committee. So this is what they ultimately decided on. And that is my very brief introduction to the ordinance. Obviously, you've got some time to kind of chew on it. First reading will be February 28th, second reading March 14th. Any questions?
Has any of this been, it probably has not been run by any of the users or the typical users.
No, we have not sent it out to anybody. Wanted to go through the workshop first. Then this, the rest of this week, we'll send it out to utility companies and their contacts, make sure they're aware of it and get some feedback.
Again, though, a lot of those are firms that operate statewide. This isn't cutting-edge policy here. We, we borrowed a lot of this material from other communities and took best practices, obviously, fit it to Kerrville. So it will not be out of the ordinary for these companies to be dealing with other right-of-way management ordinances in other communities.
They're familiar with-
It's a very, yes. It's a very common tool. Basically, just provides local control at the local level and protects your street, your taxpayer's street assets.
I think it's absolutely necessary. It's just, some of them, when they, when they leave it, it's, it's a mess.
It's a mess.
Yeah. And, and that money that was spent, yes. And what was a smooth road is no longer a smooth road, and it's very frustrating, yeah. Any other comments, council?
Nope.
No, I don't.
Roman?
So when we're looking at the Public Utility Commission and their regulations, I'd, forgive me if it's in there, but I didn't see it in the ordinance. Is this, are these regulations on top of those? Or do these completely replace any regulations that that commission has put in place?
I believe it would be on top of.
Right. State law, whether it's the PUC or the, there's another entity I believe involved. They, they set out laws with respect to making sure these, these users have the right to go into city right-of-way. And they're constantly tweaking it because whether you're part of the cable industry or the telecommunications industry, you've got lobbyists, and so there, I guarantee there's bills been filed that have tried to, you know, lessen the city's regulations over this. And there's been case law, in fact, in the last few years, on this specific issue with respect to fees that you can charge. We do get fees. We get, you know, fees from HCTC for their use of our right-of-way. But all that being said, so the state law sets up the right to get in and then the payment that has to go to the city as using our property. This just goes into management of it. So whenever they, you know, have to do work, they've got to come in and pull a permit. And, you know, I, that's just natural, right? It should be, because it's our property, and we ought, we ought to know who's out there doing what, and then they ought to repair it to our standards.
Yeah. Thank you. And when it goes to fees, do we have an example or estimates of what those are going to look like when we adopt it?
Yes, there's a number of different franchise fees and right-of-way fees that we have that are all mostly individualized with different user groups. However, this is really a management ordinance. So this isn't necessarily a fee component separate from what those are, if that makes sense.
We have not looked at the specific fee for the right-of-way permit.
Correct.
But the, the other fees are already established.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, the waivers. Is there a time period that we're going to, say, when they apply to the waiver and there's a conference required with the director, when does council have to hear it by? I just, I recall that kind of being a part of other ordinances that we've adopted, just a part of the due process.
Right. We didn't discuss one. I could see it kind of going two ways. If we're going to work with the developer on mitigating those concerns back and forth with staff before we bring it to council, that timeframe could be limiting. However, always good to give the customer an expectation.
Right. Okay. If, if there's something that, any standard timeframe, whether it's 30 days, 90 days, that we usually put it in place, if we can bring something like that to first reading for council to consider, I would appreciate that. Just so we can give them an expectation, like you said of-
Right.
What's expected, because they know they're going to meet with you, but when they meet with you, they're saying, do we, you know, even let's just say they come and they have the meeting and there's not a mutual agreement there, unfortunately, then they're going to say, what's next? How long do I have until this actually goes before council?
Right. We can look to other ordinances that have similar waivers, like your subdivision ordinance, and certainly mirror the policies that you all have set.
I appreciate that. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. That's all I got.
Okay, so thank you. So we'll see this in two weeks for the first reading, and then two weeks later for the second.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Drew. All right, number two B, procedural rules for the boards and commissions, including applications and deadline processes.
So mayor and council, you all had asked for us to bring this to you as a future agenda item. You've seen your agenda packet. We did try to basically outline the processes that we have as staff to help facilitate the application, interview, and ultimate selection process by council. There are a number of nuances in that that we've adopted as general practices over the years, based off of council feedback over time. We're certainly open to modifications of that. We want to make that as easy as possible, both for applicants as well as for the council in going through those interview processes and then make, you know, being comfortable making those selections. So please let us know if there's any questions that you have in regards to what we outlined or if we missed anything within there.
I think the, our biggest concern, or the, the one that has probably come up the most often, is we have a two-week deadline. And there have been times when we have allowed other applications to come in after that two-week deadline.
Right. That's, that's where it stemmed from for, for me. It was, we were, we did, that, and I think of an example, most recent example is probably EIC, where there were some submitted after the date that was posted in the press release that we were accepting applications. And six applications came in, two of them received after that date. And we appointed, out of three appointments we made, two of them that were submitted after that date were made to EIC. And I don't know if I've said this with another council member or when I discussed it or with staff, but I had no reservations to those members being appointed. But there was that situation, and then when it came to the other recent one, the Library Advisory Board, at that time, we had people who submitted applications. And I don't, I think there may have been an error, because there was not a date put out that we were accepting applications by. And then some people submitted them past an expectation date that the city had. And so there was just confusion. And I was like, and then staff told us, these people submitted it past the deadline, so you can't consider them. And, you know, we did that with EIC. So I would just like for council to, just across the board, be like, this is whatever policy we have in place. So our applicants who are applying for boards, because these are volunteer positions, we want to make it easy for them, have an expectation of when their deadline to apply is and how that works.
Well, I think that's important, too. Just to clarify, though, I do, and I'm just meaning to clarify. Specific to the board, I remember, tell me if I'm wrong, are you talking about the Library Advisory Board?
Yes.
Okay. Because I had a conversation with, you were on the Library Advisory Board. So I asked Brenda, I said, hey, we got one that came in like today or yesterday. It came in either Monday or Tuesday. And it was like, no, we don't have enough time.
Well, there was one on our chair when we came to council meeting that night.
So, I mean, I think, I understand what you're saying, and I agree that this is a great thing to clarify. But I guess I would just put out there that it's not really apples to apples in those two scenarios specifically. Like, we didn't have one sitting on our chair to consider. That doesn't mean we shouldn't, like, make a day that makes sense, but just to put out there that it wasn't, that we weren't in the same exact situation and did two totally different things.
Well, and I think what we're after is-
It's a clarification, and I agree.
What, what are we comfortable with? Is a week out? Is it two weeks out? If there's a lot to, for the interview teams to contact, it, it can't, if there's, if you have less than two weeks, it gets a little complicated.
Yeah, and I personally would like to leave it at two weeks. And the reason for that is because a lot of these boards, some of the more popular ones, will have an excessive amount of people that apply. And you need the two weeks just to go through all the applications. And most of the time, they're all qualified. Everybody that's applying is qualified. So that's when I refer back to the date their application was submitted. Because that's how I interview them. I look at the date their application came in. A call to find out if they're still interested. And, and a lot of times, the night before council, I'm still talking to people from the original list.
I think that's mostly, I do think that's mostly true. I think that, not probably in, in super recent time, but I know in, since the time I've, I've been on council, that there actually have been times when either there weren't enough people or there was a consideration that maybe the qualifications weren't what the, the council at that time was looking for for applicants. So then all of a sudden, you're back in the situation of, this is the date we've set up to make board appointments. However, either A, we didn't get enough applicants, or B, and I think that's kind of how it always ends up kind of going, like, can't be like a perfect, like, can't be like a perfect, just every single time this thing. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, and I'm not advocating for, for not clarifying. I'm just saying, we, there are times when, when it isn't just a matter of the dates here. We set the date. We have, you know, ton of qualified applicants, and so we should set this as a cutoff date. If, if that were the case, absolutely. I just know that that doesn't happen every single time. I mean, Roman and I, we're, we're, you know, BBAA, right? So, I mean, making those appointments is very difficult until, you know, that was, you know, but it's just, it's not always the same, I guess.
And it's, you know, the difference between the popular boards and the unpopular boards, as to how many people apply.
Absolutely. So that's where it gets a little tricky to me, is when, when we run into a situation where we don't have enough of an applicant pool to, to, to go off of a hard date.
And that happened the other, last month with the Food Service Advisory Board. They, we still had one opening after, you know, we, we assigned the two people that did apply.
So then, so then what do you do?
Yeah, so again, if there's, if there's not enough, I mean, that's what it is at that particular meeting with, and then the call goes out, that there's still another position available.
And then what happens? And then what's the cutoff then?
Well, then if we stick to the two weeks-
And it would be another month before we could appoint.
It would be another two weeks.
Then we would call it, we would call it for two weeks and then have two more weeks after that, too.
Yeah, the way that Food Service Advisory Board did it was, they, they opened it back up, received another application, and then we made that appointment at the following council meeting.
Then we wouldn't be in a two-week deal then, right?
Right.
If we said that that was our hard timeline, that wouldn't work in that case.
Do we all agree that a two-week is the timeframe that's needed for that?
I don't know. I, I don't know. I could probably do a week.
Joe, we haven't heard from you yet.
I'm, I'm enjoying the show. Listen, having a standard two-week time period is fine with me. Having a standard one-week time period is fine with me. I think we need to be able to talk to people who are interested in serving. Roman and I had something similar. We, we had a guy that was, had applied. It had expired, and we never got a hold of him. So it takes some time to, to track them down.
What, how does, what about, what's the deadline? Is it the Monday, eight days before the meeting? When, if anybody wants to submit a request for an agenda item? And I think it's from council or the public and even staff, I think, if they need to get something. It's the eight days, it's the Monday before.
Monday right before, but the one in advance of that, so.
It's almost two weeks.
Right. So what if we make it just, what does council think about making that the deadline? Because that's when all the agenda preparation deadline goes into place. And you're like, we're not accepting anything else for the agenda. This is our deadline. And so at that point, we say, anybody who has submitted at that point, their names are going to go on the agenda. Because we have an agenda bill with everybody's names that apply.
Sometimes so, it's, it's-
It's pretty tight.
Not always. Yeah, we, we submit the packets to you all, but I don't know that we actually include the names within there. Shelley, can you refresh our memories on that?
We do include the name on the agenda bill in the summary, and that's all, yeah. Only the names.
Maybe it'd be good to stick with the two weeks.
I think the two weeks is easier to remember and, and to work with.
But, I mean, I, I, can we stipulate that if either we don't have enough qualified applicants or if council as a whole determines that the applicant? I don't want to be put in a situation where we have three positions and three applicants and, you know, maybe one of us feels very passionately that one of the applicants, for whatever reason, is not qualified, that we feel that we are having to put someone in that position because those are the only applications and we've, and we've closed the deadline. Like, I don't want council to ever have to be in that position. And I don't want anyone to turn to our own internal rules and use that to say, we have to do that because this is the rules. I mean, there's, there's just times when, you know, things don't work in a way that-
Well, you know, each one of us is, is tasked with overseeing certain boards.
Right.
Why can't it be at our, at our, I mean, the circumstances are, are different.
That's what, that's what I'm just, I don't want to get us locked into something that's going to give us some unintended consequences.
We should have, you know, a norm. What's our norm? Two weeks. But because of this circumstances, we're going to extend it. Stuart's going to put out a press release, and we're going to open it back up.
I mean, as long as everybody understands that might happen.
Would our, our book, would both of you be open to that? That it's two weeks unless circumstances dictate that the interview team says we need to?
Even, but even in recent, in recent history, when we had the Library Advisory Board thing, that was Brendan and I were the interview team. We considered everybody that came in. The one that came in that night, I mean, I've known her for 20 years. We, we considered them. But it would have been better to have a conversation with them.
Oh, yes, yes.
I think that's necessary.
I guess we should clarify that we received three before that meeting, and then there was another fourth one that we received on the date.
You're right.
Right. So I was talking about, I wasn't even referring to the one we received at the day of the meeting, because I knew, I was like, I haven't even seen this. So, but there were three before the meeting, like a week before that we got. So just to clarify that point, because, no, I totally agree with you on that one. I think the, as far as it goes with the interview team, because council as a body and by a majority oversee all the boards and commissions and the appointment process, I think, and in order for the community to be clear about it, too, it would be good if we come back to a council meeting and the interview team either say, recommend, we need another, however long, and the council at that time then says, we're going to open it up for an extended period.
I'm not, I'm not understanding.
So what I'm recommending is we have whatever two-week process that we agree with, the two-week before the meeting deadline. And then, let's say we get, let's say today, we were making appointments today, and the interview team at a regular meeting said, we either don't have anybody that applied or we have people that applied, but we have three vacancies and we only have two appointments. We'll appoint the two people, but council, we would like to open it up for another, you give us a period of time, two weeks, four, four weeks, whatever you say. And then council says, yes, let's do that. Because now council took action to whatever policy guidelines we had in place. We said, yeah, we're now changing- We said, yeah, we're now changing that for this particular moment, because we agree something.
Upon the advice of the interview team.
Right, right, because they're the ones who deal with it for the most part.
And, and we did that recently, I mean, you had.
And I think, I think, and, and we've been doing that.
No, I, I, I don't, and I, I'm good with that, I, I just would say that if we do that, we may be putting ourselves at another month before we can make a appointment. We're gonna say that, because then we gotta wait two more weeks for applications to come in, and then we have to have two weeks to review them, which, yeah, I, I don't know. If there could, there may not be an issue with that, but it's just something that needs to be considered, yeah.
And I was gonna say, at that point, when we come, when we come to council, we can say, you know, as council, we're by majority overriding that two-week period and saying, we're only giving one week, because we need new applicants by our next, you know, meeting. By majority, we can always change our own guidelines and rules, but to have something in place for, across the board initially, I think is helpful. It's definitely helpful for me, I think it'd be helpful for applicants to.
So is it basically the same process we're doing now?
Mm-hmm. It, it's basically.
With the interview team coming back to us.
I, I think.
We know as a council that when you receive applications after, in the two-week period prior to the next council meeting, that we're saying amongst ourselves that that's not normally gonna be part of our consideration of applicants. But, I mean, Shelley, should she still send us those?
That's correct.
I mean, when they.
So, one of the things we could do is, there, there's a period between that fourteen days, which I'm, I'm gathering there's some consensus there, and when we actually post the packet. Uh, what we can do is just, within the agenda bill, inform the council that we've received applications, if that is the case, uh, for that board, um, between when that deadline was and when uh the packet was produced. Uh, and that way, you all will know, um, that we've received additional applications, um, and, and you all can choose at the council meeting how you want to proceed.
Okay, so, let me just ask this, I, I don't, so, so what if that happens? Like, let, let's say we have, we have a, three board openings, and, and we have two by the deadline, and then Shelley's like, hey, we got three more. Are we not allowed to consider those until we come to a council meeting and say we'd like to consider those? I mean, I, 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 I really, I really like clarity.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of, there, every, it's just a very, every situation is unique, and I, and I, and I want to be as clear as the next person. But I, I just, you know, as you go through, as you go down the line with these board, there, there's just some unique, uniqueness to, to how many people apply. When do they apply? How many positions do you have? How, how regular do they, how regular do they meet? Or do they have to meet right away? Or are they the kind of board that, you know, is an advisory board, or are they the kind of board that's a commission that, that, you know, I, I, it just, it seems like there's a lot of times when there may need to be an exception, which I think is kind of why we're in the position that we're in right now.
Yes, yeah.
I just don't want to over-regulate ourselves.
Yes.
Right.
Well, and then I think, too, on the other hand, it's not a matter of life and death if you put two people on and you still have an, another appointment, another opening, so, um.
And, and I think going back to, so are the citizens now. Um, because if it's past the deadline, and let's just say it's the next day, and we have two people that submitted an application, and one person, the same day saw, I'm a day past the deadline, I'm not gonna submit mine, because they won't consider me now, doesn't submit their application, and the other two did. I just don't want to get into a situation where we're also making arbitrary decisions on, because these two did, even though we said, we set a deadline, and when somebody.
We want to be consistent.
We want to be consistent, right. And so we just want to be, you know, make it fair, so even citizens, when they're like, well, I would have applied, but it was past the deadline, and it was past the deadline, that person applied, and yet they got on.
Well, yeah, but it clearly says that they hold on to the applications for a year.
That's what I was gonna say. I mean, if someone's interested, I would always, I would always, I tell somebody that talks to me about a board, apply now.
Yes.
Your application is gonna be held for a year. I mean, I understand what you're saying.
So how do we put something out, could we put something out that says, you will, are guaranteed consideration if you submit it before the deadline? If it's after the deadline, we cannot guarantee that council will, you know, consider and, and look at your application, although it will be held for a period of one year.
Doesn't it pretty much say that?
You're just saying that it's not automatic.
It's not a guarantee that you're even gonna be looked at, because you submit after.
That would be, that would be a little bit more, um, that would be, give a little more flexibility.
I think so, yeah.
That just says, yeah.
It's a pretty common HR practice.
I think, I think that's.
Pretty common HR practice to say, first review of applications will occur on this day.
Yes.
And I think it's understood then that after that.
That there may be a reason we need to look to others, or not look to others.
And I think if we could put that statement in, everybody's aware, and then that gives us the flexibility to say.
Sounds like enough to me.
Okay, you're putting the statement in where?
In whatever, whatever goes out that we're accepting applications, so I guess press releases. I don't know if there's.
Application itself, I don't know.
On the application itself?
It'd be, it'd be in the publication, as well as, um, you know, if we have any postings, uh, you know, that, on the website or anything else like that.
I, I think, I mean, you're not guaranteed that your application will be reviewed if you turn it in past this emission date.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
But that it, uh, applications are ongoing. We accept applications throughout the year.
Application is current for a year.
Yeah, and then it falls on the interview team and the rest of council to say, yeah, well, what?
It does state on our website that you can apply anytime.
Right.
And it's held.
Yes, yes.
We're just talking about the people that come in after, two weeks before, we're supposed to be making the appointment.
Yeah.
Right, so, we can't guaran- we can't guarantee that you'll be looked at for that particular appointment that's coming up in two weeks.
But the, uh, the interview team then has that review of, if there aren't enough, uh, if they don't apply, they can look at those, so.
Yeah.
All right, are we clear with, uh, I didn't think so.
Okay, you're not guaranteed you will be reviewed for the board?
If so, well, you, so whenever we, if it's submitted after the two-week deadline, you're not guaranteed that you will be reviewed and considered at that council meeting, where, after the appointments are gonna be made? If you submit it after the deadline.
What did you say, EA? I like, I like what.
It's a pretty common HR practice to say, first review of applications will occur.
Yes.
When, when applications are received at this date.
Right.
Uh, and essentially, that's when we would be forwarding those applicant, those applications to y'all, which is what we've done as a practice right now, fourteen days in advance of the council meeting.
Much simpler and easier and.
But, yeah, yeah, by that date, whatever the two weeks is, yeah.
So first review, applications will occur.
Fourteen days prior to the council meeting. So we, we, you all, that we, we put those publications out thirty days in advance of the council meeting. The first uh, application packets of all the applicants will go out two weeks prior to that council meeting.
And that's where we first look.
If we get applications between then and when the packet's produced, we will let you all know that. And that way, you can be informed within the council meeting on, give us direction on what you want to do with those applications, or if you want to delay a decision.
And it leaves it open for flexibility there.
And do, do your posts say that they could apply whenever they want to? You did say that.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I just want to clear that, that's the first review, I like that language, that's good. And then that they also know, you can submit any time, but this is the first period.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, EA Bandell. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Very good, let's move on. Uh, we're probably going to move, oh no, it's on five o'clock, we've got plenty of time, we're good. All right. Move, I'm an hour ahead of myself. Okay, um, for executive session, um.
Mayor, we only have three A. Uh, we do not have any uh economic development project up to be today. Um, so if you, if it's, your purview to call uh three A is the only thing that staff needs.
Okay, so we have, um, let's, uh, let's, we need a motion for uh executive session for five?
Three A.
For three A, that's right.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that we adjourn into executive session, um, on three, under five-five-one-point-oh-seven, one-five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, and five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven.
Second?
Second.
All right, we have a second, all in favor, and we will adjourn at four-fifty-two for executive session.